And this evening, we have first of all, I guess, a presentation from the New York Power Authority on streetlights by Casey Mastro. Casey, if you would like to take the podium, it is all yours. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Casey Mastro. I am the Lead Key Account Executive for the Central New York Region for the New York Power Authority. I specialize in the development of all energy efficiency, clean energy projects for local governments and other public entities across the state for the New York Power Authority. I'm here to talk about, well, two topics that we've been discussing with the Village. First and foremost is the potential for the ownership transfer and upgrade to LED lights with digital asset management controls and maintenance for street lighting. And if there's any time, power supply as well. But my focus today is on a primary project that we've been in discussions with for some time, on LED streetlight. I provided an analysis. I've been talking to Jake and Marcia for some time about this and have, in the spirit of transparency, provided Jake all of my engineering calculations and assumptions for this project. I would like to say, from a standpoint of a business model, that the New York Power Authority is an authority to the state of New York. And our mission is to help local governments and other public entities make energy-based, data-based, energy decisions for the betterment of all constituents within a local government. So NIPA has no real financial skin in the game. We operate as an independent third party to public entities in the state to help you make energy decisions, right? So we are not a for-profit energy service company. And in that spirit, I am here as, what I like to call, a trusted energy advisor, helping the Village make a decision about your assets and a model that you have been under, as well as hundreds, thousands of other local governments have been under previously, since about, before 2017, in which the investor-owned utility owns your assets and you pay what's called facilities charges monthly, which is essentially like a long-term, decades-long car lease, essentially. So what I've shown to the board here is a one-page document that outlines a very conservative, and when I say very conservative, I mean it's riddled with allowances and contingencies and fluff, to capture any and all costs that we could possibly imagine in changing your assets to LED, upgrading them with digital asset management controls, including an initial two-year maintenance contract. The reason that I've said that we're including a maintenance contract is because, as you all know, the investor-owned utilities have owned these fixtures for decades and they have maintained them. And hopefully, our G and E has done a good job in doing that. I can't say that's the case for all investor-owned utilities or all local governments across the state. The Power Authority has personally implemented 250-plus thousand LED streetlight upgrades across the state to date, covering hundreds of local governments. I could provide a list of the 75-plus that I have personally managed since this wave of opportunity started around 2017. The one-page document that I've shown provides an estimate of, for utility analysis only, right? So this is me looking at your utility bills and cross-referencing those bills with the public tariff. Not that anyone is taking the time to read the public tariff on street lighting, but it is partially my job to do so. And if you ever have trouble sleeping at night, feel free to dive into that tariff. But it's important to understand how you're being billed. Jake has. Those of you who are responsible for understanding how you're being billed for these things should take a moment to dive into that stuff. And that's primarily the reason why NIPA leads so heavily on the municipal model. So I'm here to encourage the Village to proactively change the way in which you have a relationship with street lighting, mainly because you pay so much money in rent, in facilities charges. It is by far the vast majority of your annual costs for this asset. My initial utility analysis shows you pay about $14,960 roughly a year in energy for those current assets, and you pay about $71,549 in facilities charges. Facilities charges are essentially the pass-through cost for the depreciation of the asset and maintenance. I am showing an analysis here in which you would be saving approximately, where are my savings numbers here? $65,801 in total annually from what you pay now. It's approximately 60-plus percent. You can see the breakdown in kilowatt-hour cost savings and ownership savings. The ownership savings is $66,753 on this project. The energy savings is $9,467. So it's about roughly a little less than 50%, around 50% savings from energy as you see those LEDs get installed. But the moment you take ownership, the moment the Public Service Commission approves the ownership transfer from the utilities to the Village, you would immediately see approximately 60% saving in your bill. And that is because you go down from paying individual facilities charges per asset down to what's called a pole-lease charge, which is a $1.62 per fixture annually to essentially rent what would be now your assets on National Grid poles. I'm sorry, not National Grid, RGENE. So because of that fact, and this is the case for any local government that has more than 100 lights, or even less, maybe 50, you can make the argument from a data perspective that owning the assets and getting out from this decades-long model is an important, I think, educated, important energy decision, right? So we are, at the very least here, we are disrupting a revenue stream because of those facilities charges being what they are, and that is a long-term revenue captured by the investor-owned utilities. And local governments have been paying you forever. NIPA, previous to 2019, was a sort of a relationship builder between the market and local governments for how you would maintain those fixtures after owning them. It was the only part of this, what I call, a turnkey service that was not being provided by NIPA. And so in 2019 and onward, we changed that. We are offering one- and two-year initial maintenance contracts as well, because, as I've heard hundreds of times from folks like Jake and other people who are responsible for public works, we don't want to get into the street lighting game. We don't want to manage poles. We don't want to worry about it. We haven't worried about it in decades. So you don't have to worry about it. NIPA is under contract with ENJ Electric across the entire state to perform that maintenance. We'd be happy to put you in touch with them and have any level of depth of what, beyond what I've already described to Jake and Marcia, of what that maintenance program is and what it entails, beyond just the savings component of this project. Again, what I'm showing here is about as conservative of an estimate as possible. So I'm showing now a payback of about eight years, but that is with a lot of contingency, 10% contingency at $23,000, an estimate of allowances, and it does include the purchase of the system from the investor-owned utility. All of this would be paid for upfront by the Power Authority, and you would pay for it back over the course of that term, whether you bonded for it to NIPA. So there's no upfront cost for this project. What I calculated from your bills, you have about 426 fixtures. Good number. Remember the nice old style decorative fixtures that you have upfront? So this would be a project for both the cobra-head fixtures on wooden poles with the aluminum arms, as well as the decorative fixtures that you have. And so we're talking about ownership of the arms, the fixtures, and the wiring for the cobra heads, as well as the poles and underground wiring for the decorative fixtures. All of that is included in this estimate alongside any and all administrative costs to manage this project and to perform the design and implementation of the project. I will also say that this is a once-in-a-30-year decision. As an engineer by education, I feel like it's my duty to advise you that this is a project that should be done right. And that means it should be done in accordance with an engineering standard, which is IES RP 0818, which this project would follow. That means we would come in during the design, so I'm here essentially asking the board to approve or pass a resolution to move this project into design phase, is what I'm actually here to request, at which point we would work with a contracting partner, come into the Village and start assessing actual conditions of a percentage of your assets here in the Village. This isn't something that would be done via Google Earth or anything. We'd be physically here doing photometric analyses and making the proper determinations based on what types of roadways you have, how far apart the lights are, how, you know, the altitude of the lights from the ground, what the proper illumination in the Village should be from a street-by-street perspective. NIPA views these projects, first and foremost, as a health and safety project for the pedestrians walking around the Village, right? So this is how we view it. A secondary benefit is energy savings and facilities charges savings. The first and foremost is that you're going to have a properly well-lit village based on an engineering standard in which the people walking around this Village are as safe as possible. Headlights are for the drivers, streetlights are for pedestrians. That's how we view this. It is the primary focus of this project. It just happens to come with a significant amount of savings. And to do that correctly, you need to do it via an engineering standard. So that is what we would do, and that is a part of this project. You can see it as a part of design and construction management, as well as the administration of the project from NIPA's standpoint. From that point, we would then provide you what's called a 90% design. These projects, lighting by nature, go pretty quickly to 90% design. It's not a weather-based technology like HVAC. It's fairly simple. It's kilowatt-hours in, kilowatt-hours out by wattage. We can be very, very, very certain of what we think savings would be in a project like this, depending on the assumptions that are made, right? So one of the differences between what I've shown you here and a design is I'm making estimates on what I believe LED reductions should be based on the wattages that are currently in the bill, design and physical locations of the lights. Speaking with you, with this board and folks that are involved in the Village, may alter that a little bit. Some places may want to be more of that. Some places can be under that. We may be able to have lower wattages in certain areas. So I would expect that some of those energy savings would probably go up as opposed to down. But this, again, is an estimate that I have made based on your current wattages. So the design is very helpful alongside working with the people that know the Village best, based on residential, commercial areas, intersections, and so forth. Nobody knows your Village like you folks, and we encourage people to be as part of this process as possible. And that would all go into the 90% design. If that 90% design were approved, we would then move to 100% design, which is what you probably see in the contract, and would be implemented here in the Village. And we would also work alongside you to help with that ownership transfer process. I will say that of all the things that I have talked to local governments about in this process, dealing with the utility and making that ownership transfer, has been the most administratively burdensome. However, the Public Service Commission is the governing body, and they have put together a very strict code, 70A is what it's called, in which the investor-owned utilities need to abide by. So there's specific timelines that need to be held, that need to be held accountable to, and we would get through this process together all in all. From the time you request a price to the time you sign the pole attachment and purchase agreements, we'd probably take ownership over the course of nine months roughly. In that time, we do what's called a parallel path, which is we want to have a fully baked, agreed-upon design by the time the Public Service Commission changes ownership, at which point we are able to then go in and start making upgrades to LED. We can't do anything while the investor-owned utilities own the fixtures, but we like to combine our timelines of design with the ownership transfer. And so we would be able to literally be implementing LEDs very, very quickly after the Public Service Commission were to sign over ownership. So I wanted to not take too much time to stand up here and speak all the reasons I think this project is valuable. I don't want to presume what you think is valuable, but I am here, after much discussion with Jake and Marcia, I'm very grateful to be here. I would be happy to answer any questions that the board has on the value of this project from your perspective.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm a little concerned about the maintenance aspect of this. Suppose a car crashes into a pole and the pole falls down and we call the maintenance. Was that B and L, did you say, or?
Our maintenance contractor is ENJ. You wouldn't call ENJ directly. We have a 24/7 hotline, and we have staff at NIPA that manages this project, this service solely.
And how is that cost figured?
The cost is a flat $24.46 a fixture for unlimited routine maintenance. So the way the maintenance is structured is you have three different types of maintenance. You have routine maintenance, nonroutine maintenance, and emergency maintenance. The $24.46 per fixture that I just quoted you is for unlimited routine maintenance. So that is unlimited changes from lights to, as the utilities change out poles. It's unlimited change-outs of the fixtures if they go bad. I'm trying to remember the three or four other things that are included in routine maintenance. And then there's nonroutine maintenance. So there's weather-related incidents, there are accidents. These are considered nonroutine maintenance. NIPA offers a recommendation on what we think a nonroutine maintenance budget would be. However, we do not expect nonroutine maintenance to be an out-of-pocket cost to any municipality. We have not had nonroutine maintenance be out-of-pocket cost to any municipalities to date. Those are almost always exclusively handled through appropriate insurances. So if a pole went down, the reason that we recommend a budget is because if the Village had to put out some upfront cost and then be reimbursed by the insurance, that would take place. The utilities would put the pole back up, and our nonroutine maintenance contract would then put the assets back on that pole, on your behalf. And it would be completely managed by the Power Authority.
So is this maintenance contract on a yearly basis, or is it?
Right now, we offer one-year and two-year initial maintenance contracts to see if you like the service. Frankly, we don't want to stick anybody with a long-term contract if, for whatever reason, they aren't happy with that contract. I have not had that happen yet, however. And then you can re-up that contract at either two-year or, I think, up to five-year terms after the fact on secondary contracts. But the initial contract is either one or two years. This estimate is showing a two-year contract.
So the annual savings is actually the $65,801 less the cost of the annual maintenance?
The annual maintenance I'm estimating is $10,419, yielding a total estimated savings of $65,801 a year.
Where is that number?
It is underestimated. The estimated annual savings portion of the page, about halfway down. You can see our kilowatt-hour savings in KWH estimate from your bill, that total cost savings in comparison to what you're paying in deliveries.
So what, on this page two, what's this, what are these costs? Routine maintenance, annual cost, year one, $11,462, nonroutine maintenance budget, what's this?
Those are the estimates for maintenance, right? So that $11,000 includes a 10% contingency that we're not calculating in the one-page summary because we don't really use it. It's just an administrative item that we put on there. The actual figure is $10,419.96. That's, again, that's for routine maintenance. The second column is the recommended nonroutine maintenance budget that we suggest you consider, although we do not believe, we have not had a customer yet, actually have to pay out-of-pocket for nonroutine maintenance. Those costs have all been covered by appropriate insurances.
But you're collecting the money anyhow from a tax?
We're not collecting it. We're not taking it. We're just suggesting if you have to.
The Village is taking it. The Village has got to collect it. How's it end up in their budget if it's not ultimately part of the?
It's a portion. What we're suggesting is if there's any circumstance where the Village needs to be reimbursed by an insurance company for a nonroutine maintenance incurrence, that you could set aside some of the savings from the project for that, in escrow. But if that money's never used, it stays in escrow. If it is, you could use it, but then get reimbursed by the insurance company. It's not an expense that we foresee or have had local governments have to pay out-of-pocket long-term. It's a recommended budget. It's not a budget that we think you're responsible for at the end of the day. It's just a recommendation.
So the Village should investigate with its insurance carrier what the additional cost is going to be to insure?
Yes, Jake has begun that process. We estimate about?
Poles and fixtures, or whatever.
$0.35 per $100 of value of the assets, I think, is what we, yeah, Jake's been looking into that, yes.
Basically, based on the value of the assets, I think we calculated about seven to 10 grand, about seven to 10 grand per insurance. That's got to be finalized because we have to.
Well, that would be to replace it. There's also a liability.
Right.
Yeah. Pole, fixture falls down and hits somebody, you know?
That includes the liability. That includes the liability.
It doesn't. Because?
What was that?
I didn't say. Talk to the people.
Now, these plans you have here, you have routine maintenance, annual cost, $11,462, and nonroutine maintenance, $11,511. Do you have to take both of those, or is there an option to take one of them, or that's what you just explained?
Yeah, you could, what we'd be under contract for is just the routine maintenance. So you're spending $75,000 a year now in facilities charges. We're suggesting that an annual maintenance contract would be $10,000, just over $1,007, you know, one-seventh of what you're paying now. The nonroutine, the nonroutine budget is just a recommendation. Again, we believe that what we've seen in the past across hundreds of projects is that those costs are incurred by insurance companies, whether it be weather-related or, God forbid, somebody drives into a pole, and their insurance has to cover that cost.
So basically, the Village is on its own for nonroutine maintenance. Whether you cover that cost with insurance or not, that's, you know, you cover it with insurance. I don't know if there's a deductible, you know, any insurance, the Village's policies, but the Village might have. I know, like at most homeowners' insurance, there's a deductible, you know, so.
Yeah, we have a deductible for normal, if we have a normal plan, there's a deductible on there.
So whatever it is, you know?
I would imagine there probably might be a deductible. I would urge you to consider what you've been paying for decades. I mean, that's why we're.
Well, it's still a net savings, but it just may not be the $65,801 a year. But it's still a net savings because whatever the insurance costs and whatever the deductible is, it's not going to add up to $65,000 a year, right?
Right.
So you're still going to, so there still is a net savings by owning the streetlight system.
I mean, there's a multitude of ways you could do this project. You don't have to own them. You could do this project either through your utility, where they would still own the fixtures, or you could do it through a for-profit ESCO. You could do it through NIPA. Those are generally the three ways you could do this. I think that if you were to suggest to the utility that they would continue owning the fixtures and provide you on paper what I think would look like much smaller capital-dollar value, paid off in like two years or something, I think that that would look attractive on paper. But I think, again, the real value of this project is not in the energy savings or paying off the remaining value of the assets as the investor-owned utility calculates them. I don't know exactly when your assets were installed, but I would wager some of them are fairly old and have probably met their depreciated value already. But again, what we're trying to do is help encourage folks to proactively take ownership of these fixtures and get out from underneath this facilities charges model because there's just, I don't know how long these assets have been in in this Village, but from the savings numbers that we're showing, it's probably pretty eye-opening how much the local governments all across the state have been paying over 20 years. And so this is the model that we are encouraging folks to work under, and is primarily the only model that we've suggested since 2016.
Would this mean that anytime we get a light out, someone calls, and if it's not ours, it's somebody else's, and we don't know, and it'll go back on? Would that, would it be more on our hands now?
So we are including a couple of things. One, in the maintenance aspect of this, like physically, how long will it take a light to go in? We have very specific timelines for either routine, nonroutine, or emergency, right? So the days of saying, "We'll get back to you after we talk to the utility," are over. We haven't even talked about the digital asset management control system yet. NIPA, in this project, has included not a photocell, a dawn-till-dusk photocell, where they go on at night and they kick off around dawn, but the shift in the market is moving towards what's called a billable dimming tariff. This has already happened in National Grid territory. It's happening all across the state. It's, I think, in pilot right now with RGENE. So you would be getting credit, additional energy savings from dimming your fixtures, literally going onto a phone, whoever you deem to have access, I would imagine, is probably Jake or someone else. I think my mic just turned back on. Sorry, everybody. And you could, on the touch of a button, reduce the power output to any one of your fixtures, any single one on the 426. You could group them in streets. You could group them by neighborhood. You could group them by the decoratives on Main Street, if you wanted to have a parade, if you wanted to have fire, anything. And you could dim those fixtures down and the billable dimming tariff that allows you to not have to pay for energy that you're not using. There's an additional future-proofing here on this project. We could have a whole separate conversation, I think, on the value of digital asset management controls.
1:00 AM show all of them.
That's correct. That's exactly what we have. Why are lights not at full power from 11:00 at night until 5:00 in the morning if they don't have to be? There's no optical difference between 100% power and 80% first of all. So part of this is that you have a longevity aspect of these lights, where you put them in at 80%, you don't even put them in at 100%. You elongate the life of these fixtures by an additional seven years just by doing that. You don't even have an optical difference of the lumens on the ground until 80% power output. So again, this is really not just from an ownership standpoint, but from a control standpoint, really an empowering initiative to completely change the relationship that you have with streetlights. So we would go through full training on the digital asset management control for you. We would come here to your site and do the training here for you and show you how that, this comes with a 10-year software license. And 10 years from now, we could either re-up that license or, you know, the way light control, if anyone here, it's very controlled, they move at this speed of light. Sorry for the terrible pun, but there might be an even more advanced technology 10 years from now, is what I'm saying. But that is a part of this project. Those are about $140 per fixture, the nodes that go on. We can do those later. You could decide later. However, from a labor standpoint, what we call truck rolls, it's the least expensive way to do this if you're doing it while you're putting the LED in. And we encourage digital asset management controls. We can't actually, the digital asset management control is the brain of the maintenance program, so we can't actually do the maintenance program without the digital asset management controls. So we encourage their use. But you would have a full user interface on any smart device. You could see all of your assets across the tax map. You'd have these little green lights all over the place where all the lights are operating and working, and you could scroll your mouse over. You could see them, all the information pertinent to that individual fixture of a, you know, you should technically know before a constituent, because Jake or someone else, us, we, our maintenance crew, and probably Jake, would all be notified immediately. It would be an email and text that a fixture was out. So when that, you know, when that constituent calls the next day and says, "Hey, our light is out," you say, "Mr. and Mrs. Jones, thank you. We're already aware of it. For the maintenance contract, that light will be up and running within 10 business days. Thank you very much." It's just a completely different relationship with the assets than, yes, thank you for making us aware. We'll call the, we'll call RGENE and we'll get on their schedule and make them aware of it.
Maybe we can make them flash to the Christmas music in the premiere.
Can it go to red and green?
We can't change color. We can't change color, temperature. Actually, that's, not to be too joking, but we do encourage the folks in Webster to be a part of this design. You have some, again, once-in-a-30-year decisions to make based on not only the wattages in certain areas, but also color, temperature, and how you want your, how you want your Village to be perceived from, you know, there's going to be something that's going to be increased. It's called color rendering. You're going to be able to physically see individual colors better, depending on whether you have, you know, your more conventional 2700 Kelvin lights that are out there now. We encourage at least 3000 Kelvin. In some cases, folks in like commercial areas or industrial areas. In some cases, folks in like commercial areas or industrial areas have gone particularly low with 4000 Kelvin. I don't recommend that in like your residential areas. I think people will just be a little shocked. I mean, this is going to be the most visible project you do for the constituents in the village, right? So we generally recommend 3000 Kelvin.
Should we do like a survey or something and ask what they want?
My experience is that it's best to... It's best to consult with, when we do projects. It's best for the board members to consult with us and our engineering design team to make the determination based on an engineering standard what we should do, improve that in the 90% design, and then let constituents know why we're doing it based on what engineering standard and how that's going to be done, as opposed to the litany of comments that you may get based sometimes on fact and sometimes on personal opinion, which doesn't always promote, I think, an effective, efficient project.
Is there... There villages locally where this project has taken place, where there's been a changeover, we can go look at? It's obviously out in more rural areas, the lighting's a lot different, the perception's a lot different than when they're packed in really tightly. And it's one of the things, even when we were changing some of them in our village, we went and looked at other areas, we got from the lighting contractor, we changed our post-stops to LEDs and switched them over to LEDs. We went and got a list of areas, went and looked when it was dark out, and, you know, we don't want it to look like UFOs are landing every 15 feet, you know, with real bright stark lights. So we were trying to balance providing light, having the savings, but not, you know...
Making it jarring.
Yeah, making it jarring. And so I think we went to 2700 in some of the residential areas, but those are, you know, post-stop lights 14 feet off the ground, rather than the big overheads.
Right. So if at any point in time we were going to be installed... I'll... There's kind of a couple of questions there. The first is, I'll address color temperature. If you... You have the right to install anything that you want here. If you were going to install fixtures that were below that engineering standard that I quoted you earlier, you would have to just acknowledge in writing that you were consenting to putting in wattages that were below, you know, an illegal lumen on the ground based on an engineering standard. Doesn't mean you can't do it. I mean, you could be candles out there if you wanted to, but that this is your village. But we would base all of our recommendations on that standard, and then we would use through 90% design to determine what's actually going to be implemented, and that's what gets put in 100% design. Right? So second question is, you could go right over to Wayne County. We did a full county-wide aggregation over there. There's probably nine or 10, nine or 10 individual municipalities in Wayne County alone that we worked together as a single project. That's just a hop, skip, and a jump away. We did the material contract for Rochester, but they did install them themselves. But you were talking about rural area, not urban here in this county. But yeah, hop on over to Wayne County.
Don't have to.
Yeah, so I mean, we could go look at Ontario.
Ontario, yeah, what was it?
Yeah. I'd be very... It's close, close. Do they handle? You know what the values are for... For Main Street?
I want to go back and look because I know the one in front of the village halls we
discussed is different, that's a different type of fixture to those, the array, and the ones we changed in the residential area with the corn cob bulbs in there, so it was just a switch over. I think we disconnected the valence and just switched over to corn cob bulbs. So it's a little different presentation of the light, the way they are. But the one in front of the village hall, I think, is 4000. The other ones were either 3. I think we tried 3 in the business area and 2700 in the residential area, trying to keep that softer, like, because they're, you know, they're basically eye-level to people's second floor in their bedroom windows, you know? So if you have one in front of your house, I know they did a project on my street, they... It was very light all of a sudden.
Well, what's really interesting is that, you know, for a long time, these lights have been illuminating people's properties. Lights aren't supposed to do that. They're supposed to illuminate the roadway under which they are standing, right? So in some cases, we've had constituents call after an LED upgrade and say, "Hey, I can't see my front yard anymore." Well, that's because the lights are doing what they're supposed to be doing. They're illuminating the area around the fixture themselves. They're not... They're based on a specific band of light based on photometric analysis. They're not supposed to be shedding light 360 degrees. So, you know, depending on perception versus engineering standard, you may have some of these discussions, but, you know, we've had hundreds of these discussions over, across the entire state, right? So we're very involved in working with local governments to handle, you know, pre and post constituent discussions on, you know, after this project is done, if it were to be enabled. Want to thank everybody for your time.
What initial cost to the village without going further for that 90%, you know, 90% workup or whatever?
Zero. NIPO covers all costs for the project.
One thing I know we talked about is that if we did the 90% and for some reason we're excited, let's not continue on with purchasing a streetlight system for whatever reason. Then there is a cost associated with that, but if we don't proceed with the rest, it's kind of rolled into the project and we don't continue with the project.
Yes.
And there's an engineering cost, I think it was about 30?
It's 40% of the project management subtotal, so it's just about 30,000. If we were to move forward and do the whole design for you and you said, "Here I won't feel like doing this anymore," we would have to just recover administrative costs up to that point, which we estimate would be about 40% of the total project management total.
Okay.
But you will get to keep that design, but so you get a lot of work for, I think, not a lot of money.
And this is something we've been looking at, I think, for literally five, six years, if not even, I think I initially got an inventory in 2015. One of the things that I think I've discussed before, the analysis paralysis, there's so many unknowns, and frankly, RGD for us, it's not everybody's experience with their power company. They don't do a bad job. They... There's been some differences lately in their response times and things, but overall, they do, you know, we call up, there's a, you know, online reporting thing, we call up, and the light could get fixed within a week and a half, two weeks generally, unless there's an issue. One of the concerns that we had and we've been exploring, the reason I think we've been looking at this so long is, like, we discussed the insurance and we have to get a liability in the system. It took me months to get a quote from RGD or a proposal for purchase. We got that, I think it was in '18. I asked again last year, we got a proposal for areas over and off Main Road, which wasn't very helpful. I replied back, and I just recently requested the price again, their sales proposal again, so we can have that. And the big thing was the insurance questions, like you said, we're trying to sort that out and make sure that we get the true costs. If we say 65, it's about 70, it's not a savings. Pretty confident that's not the experience that they've had. Again, and some of it was just the maintenance. Our residents, they pay for and deserve a certain level of service, and we want to make sure that we're not going backwards on that and that we can maintain that for them. We even started reaching out to, we have a local municipality, another village that has an electric company, so we started talking about maybe we can do an IMA with them for the maintenance on them. But one of the issues I think with that is, if we have a weather event that causes a problem, they're going to obviously concentrate on their own stuff. It's a little different than having somebody that's hired, you know, specifically, I'm assuming they make sure they know how much they can take on, you know, an ice storm's going to put everybody back a bit, but we just... There's a lot of, a lot of pieces and parts, and I think gathering those pieces and parts together isn't something that we're equipped to do. I mean, Marsha, I've been looking at this. Sometimes you don't know what you don't know, and having somebody like the power authority on your team or on your side to be able to look at these things and know the questions asked, and know the PSC 78 code that, you know, when we start to deal with the RGD or with the power company to try to get those answers, you know, it's very helpful that expertise is available. And frankly, you know, we did, you know, we've been looking at it for seven years, we did this five years ago, that's about 300 grand potentially that we missed out on if those savings do prove true. So something, hey, I feel, you know, we're... RGD wants to change these lights over LED eventually, and if we, if we, if they change them over first, the purchase price is probably going to go way, 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 way up.
Yeah.
But again, that was some of the things that you said, when did these goes in? Go in, there's 50, 60-year-old poles and fixtures and things out there, we're changing the fixtures. What's the life expectancy in a pole? We have kind of a unique situation, I remember at our last meeting or discussion, is we would actually buy some of the assets, or included in the purchase would be poles and lights. Typically, it's not, typically it's just an attachment, but we would have some of those assets because of the way our system's designed, where it's not distribution of the houses. It was, it's streetlight only. So, you know, what's the life expectancy of those poles? We have to start planning on doing pole replacements down the line, and what's that cost? I never bought a telephone pole, so I don't know and know what those are. So there's a lot of the life that goes into it and a lot that needs to be available, and I think that design would address all that. You said there's people on the ground here looking at them and understanding.
You would, that's correct.
Yeah.
Here's a... Would in fact look at that?
You would.
Sir. And that's something, I remember asking RGD years ago, how many disconnects now? Like, you know, 400, I'm like, he just told me we had to buy the poles and everything where it's streetlight only, and if there's 10, 10 lights on that circuit, we'd obviously have one disconnect, we wouldn't have one for each individual pole. So it's tough to even get answers like that because, and I think it's kind of a cash cow form, so they're not really, or feel the urgency to get rid of it, you know, so. One question I just thought of, too, when you talked about the energy, the ability to dim lights, and is there actual consumption? Right now, like, we decorate and for Christmas, there's streetlights, we have plugs on the poles, and that's all included, and there's not an extra fee for over-decorating. They're all LED light, well, usually LED lights, sometimes we have small incandescent ones or the string lights that are there, but those are included just in the regular tariff that does it on. They, and well, if they charge you more because there's an outlet on there, they figure you're going to use it?
No, the outlets are actually individualized on the bill as a separate facilities charger, it's included.
Yeah, they are, okay. Well, yeah, these are ones that, yeah, that's... We have weird ownership models here, too, as we discussed. We own, on Main Street, we own the pole. RGD owns the wire and the light at the top. Then they bill us, they don't bill us for the pole, but they bill us for everything else monthly, and then there's, you know, the outlet on there, so they gotta recoup that somehow.
Yeah, it's based on a facility charge. Each individual asset, whether it's bracket, a building, or the wiring, or the pole, or the fixture, all of those are charged separately as what's called a facilities charge on the bill.
Okay. So the outlets, the village would end up owning the outlets, too, whereas now they don't, right?
Yeah, well, and it's debatable, the outlet's on the pole that we own, so I don't know how that works on Main Street. That's really where we're...
Well, I think you just said there's an extra facility charge for the outlet.
There is a facility charge for the outlet.
Right, he is charging you for the outlets. But if you end up owning the whole, you'll end up owning the outlets, so you get rid of that. But obviously, you plug something in, if you're going to use electricity, you'll get billed for the electricity.
You would get billed for electricity for whatever you were plugging in, correct?
Yeah, but there wouldn't be any separate charge for the outlet.
Yeah, there's nothing metered, we wouldn't have to go, there would be meters in everywhere. It was still, it's just a tariff based on what the uses.
Correct.
Right. And you know, any final question for me? The maintenance, you talked about maintenance software and maintenance platform, calling in the lights, sounds like that system we might know before anybody calls us up. Currently, right now, somebody calls up and says there's a streetlight outage, it's in the old village that we own and maintain, we'll get somebody together, go out there and fix the light. If it's an RGD, we always tell them, okay, you know, we'll get the information, we'll call it an RGD, or we don't call, we have this online form we can fill out to report the streetlight outage. Is that a similar, if it's something for some reason we don't know about or don't have, that we would just do an online reporting of it?
For a fixture that's not a part of the management system, is that what you think?
I guess if it's, there's, that would go away, I guess. It sounds like it's part of the management system and just...
Yeah, so the digital asset control system would automatically send both NIPO, our contractor, and you a notification automatically via email and text with, any, any time a light either goes out, physically the light goes out, or the driver to that LED goes out, or if the pole is shifted a certain, I can't remember the degree from, from level, any time that there's any disturbance with the system, you'll be notified immediately.
That'll all happen. So, I'm, Marsha, you anticipate, assuming they decide to go through this bonding, the half a million dollar cost?
Yeah.
Because the village doesn't have a half a million bucks laying around somewhere to pay for.
Well, we tried to do, but...
We can't do. We can't have it.
We're getting to that. Yeah, we would bond it or at least take out a fan, something like that. Oh, yes, and I just, all the conversations that I've had with Casey and the detailed questions that Jake's been asking, I think at least going...
Was that a take?
No, I loved it. At least going forward with, you know, getting the 90% plan in place, I think that's a very smart investment. I'm excited about this project. I hope we do it.
Thanks, Marsha. I miss you a lot.
Yep.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
So, like, do we... When do we need to...
Well, there's, he's asking to figure to sign page two and send it back to him, if you want to go forward.
Would you initiate the 90% looking at this project?
Yeah, the design piece.
The ball holder.
If you decided to bow out, you would take...
Well, actually, by signing it, you're authorizing the whole thing to go forward, not just the 90%. As it says, "By signing below, the village of Webster authorizes NIPO to proceed with a full turnkey solution of the LED streetlighting project, which includes the final design report, procurement for materials, installation labor, construction management, post-installation, commissioning, and ongoing maintenance." But then, conversely, if at some point you decide not to proceed, then you've got to reimburse them for other costs that they've incurred up to that date, whenever it is.
Right, so you can, the majority of the work on this project is between now and that 90% design. That's 90% of the work, right? So all of that that you've just described is essentially between 90% design and construction, right? So you can stop this project at any point in time. Chances are, that wouldn't be considered until the 90% design time period where you actually received the 90% design report, but you can certainly stop a project, you could sign tomorrow and stop two days from now and really be liable for nothing, we haven't done any work yet. But we would hope that you would move forward through the full turnkey service because that's where savings are happening, right? So a 90% design report doesn't save anything. Implementing LEDs and taking ownership saves. So that we encourage folks and hope that you would go that route, but you can stop at any point in time.
Does anybody purchase a system and not convert right away?
No.
Okay.
There's no financial, there's no financial advantage to doing so, except...
I mean, the energy savings is about nine grand, you said, for switching with the conversion to LED, the real savings is in the maintenance and the asset.
That's true, yeah, that's correct. But I'd like to have anyone, I've not been in that situation where folks have taken ownership and then not immediately go on the next step to get additional savings through LED conversion.
But I just wanted you to understand what it is you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay, Jared? By signing this, you're saying, go through the whole thing. But at any point, the village could tell them, no, but that's, you know... Yeah, I mean, you said, you know, your paper itself, whatever the cost of, the additional cost of insurance is, it's not going to eat up the $65,000 a year.
Well, not only that, but we're also including contingency allowances in this project, which I think would ever.
Right. After they're all said and done, you know, maybe the 543,000 project cost could be less than that, you know, by the time they get all done with, you know, fine tuning things.
I mean, the best case scenario and the reason that we are, I mean, NIPA's vision is to have energy relationships with local governments like this. It's not in anyone's benefit for us to put forth what we think is the cheapest solution for you to be attracted to and then through multitudes of change orders, have a seriously more expensive project down the line. That's like the worst homeowner, you know, contractor relationship you think of. Where you've signed on at the cheapest price to fix your porch and then three change orders later, it's the most expensive project. That's the opposite of what we're trying to do here. We are putting forth an estimate here that is, again, conservative, right? So I don't even think the insurance premium would be even half of what we're assuming is just 10% contingency on this project. There is a lot of fluff on that paper and it's put there on purpose because we want to, we want to develop an energy relationship with the village, right? So this isn't about shaking hands and saying, see you later. This is about the next time you want to procure energy, you want to discuss a chair at a hockey rink, you want to talk about HVAC in your town or village hall, you want to talk about energy. NIPA would like to be there to talk to you about that. And streetlighting is a fantastic way to get immediate impact for folks that are not familiar with the way NIPA does business to familiarize yourself. When I started this job in 2016, I leave the work out of Ithaca, New York. I know that my email, all that stuff says Buffalo. That's a lie. I don't work in Buffalo. I work in Ithaca. I'm responsible for everything from Rochester to New York and Pennsylvania to Canada. Nobody knew about NIPA. Nobody. They knew that we did hydro asset and transmission of electric power from, from Niagara and St. Lawrence and that didn't benefit anybody in Central New York. So this entire endeavor of creating relationships in Central New York has been about doing the first project well, so that we can do the second project well. That is the purpose here. The best project would be exactly what you explained, sir, that the 90% design is less expensive on paper than the utility analysis that I'm showing here. The payback is less than eight years. That is the best case scenario. That is what we strive for at every single project. And that's what we would do here. Again, I'm making conservative estimates on LED upgrade, not based on that engineering design. That's what's done during the design. My estimates here are roughly about 50% reduction in energy based on just wattage reduction. That's not the same as going into your village on a street by street basis and making determinations on wattages by photometric analysis at specific locations. But that is what we would do here. And we think that there is significant value in doing so. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to have this robust conversation with, with people that have spent years determining whether this is right for you. So I'm grateful to be here.
So I think I'm in favor of it. I think it maybe would make sense to put it on our next agenda, so it's actually on the agenda. We've been committed to not make decisions in the moment this big, you know, maybe done a chew on a little bit, make sure it's on page and actually put it on the agenda versus this just as a presentation and then we, whoa, we voted on it. That's just my thought.
Okay. It's not subject to a public hearing unless you bind it and the bond itself is subject to a public hearing.
Yeah. I want to get it up today on the agenda. What was in the paper?
Well, okay. Just for my two cents, I agree with Marcia and Jake. I think it's something the village should definitely do.
Yeah, I don't think I didn't say that.
Well, I didn't say that. But, but what distinguishes the village from the town of Webster? Streetlights are one of the main things. There's streetlights and sidewalks in the village as opposed to most of the town. So whatever, if you can enhance the street lighting in the village over the next 30 years or whatever, I think.
I think everyone's in favor, Don. I'm just saying, would it be nice to be on an agenda that we're voting on? So people who wanted to come could just come. I know it's not open for a public vote, but typically it's not even on the agenda. Like if someone wanted to say, I didn't know you were doing that.
I think two weeks is going to make a difference. But it gives the public an opportunity. If somebody listening tonight.
Wants to come up and say something.
Say something. They have the opportunity.
I think it's just the right thing to do. That's all. I'm in favor now. Charles, Matt, you know?
No, I'm in favor.
Don doesn't like it.
No, I have to say, there's no legal requirement that you have to publish an agenda. All you have to do is publish notice of a meeting. You don't have to publish an agenda.
And Jake's been working on it for a long.
And I can bet you in two weeks, we're going to see these, at least two.
Either you come in the next meeting.
In the audience.
You better come on to me so I feel like.
Dad's calling you out. You need to be here.
I mean, I'm just one person. You guys hate that.
Jake, I mean, doesn't matter to you, right? Two weeks is, no, it's, it's obviously the, it's the board. We've been working on this for a long time and I agree with Don. It's something that we ought to pursue and do. But I also agree with Jerry that, I mean, I should be apologizing now.
You were.
But the, that, you know, if, if you guys have a standard and the board has a standard that they want to work by is that they're, they want to know this thing, whether it's recorded or not recorded, it's going over, above and beyond. It's nice. I mean, it's two weeks. I've been around for seven years. Seven years in two weeks isn't going to be bad again. But I think it is. And I think the value in this relationship, as you said, it's a relationship building, but the value within is their expertise and their ability that, hey, with this, we don't even know what we don't know sometimes on, on some of these things. So having that ability, having somebody well versed in that, it's good. And this might give an opportunity if there's other questions that pop up afterwards, you know, hey, and now we have two weeks to get things answered. So there's more confidence even next time you guys get together, so we'll get it and consider it. And we can certainly, I think the emails on there, we can forward the emails. So if there's anything, we can have those analyzed beforehand to get the answer. A lot of times things will pop up afterwards, oh, what about this? It'd be better to pop up before you vote than after your vote.
Is there any other municipality at the village level in Monroe County?
Yes. And I don't, I don't know them offhand. I did the Wayne, again, I did the Wayne County aggregation, one county over. Generally, Monroe County is, is spearheaded by my colleague, Joe Crimby, out of the Buffalo office. We're split down the middle. I'm, just submitted a, a project summary to the town of Victor a couple of days ago. But my experience this far west has been primarily in Wayne County and Livingston County also. We did this in Livingston County. So Lima and a bunch of others over in Livingston County did this as well. One of my earlier projects back in 2017 when this wave of opportunities started. But predominantly, my experience on this up here is in, is in Wayne County. We've tried to work in other entities like Brighton is a good example, but they have so many decoratives. It was almost entirely decorative. It was just so expensive per unit that they just said heck with it.
They have nice, I like their streetlights.
Well, they're very, they're, they're just very, very old, very expensive. We look, you know, like Penfield and other type of, very, very expensive fixtures.
All right. We have a theory that we should, we should wait until two weeks and then sign it.
Perfect.
Thanks, everybody.
That would be my.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
My pleasure.
Thank you very, very much for your attention.
My pleasure.
I certainly appreciate you were coming and the information that you have provided and what you were offering. But I think to finalize this, I'm a proponent of giving opportunity for those who may not be here or listening to weigh in on it should they want to. And I don't think the two weeks will make an ultimate difference.
There's no timeline on a project like this other than the cost of doing nothing, right? That's a cost. Two weeks is nothing. Not doing the project is expensive. And I think we all agree. You know, and I will say that this is a project that should be done. You should do this. Who you do it with and how is the question. Again, you could do this through a number of other entities. But I will say, and I was, this is something I take pride in as a representative of the power authority. There is no other entity that you could work with that would be doing this as an independent third party, essentially not-for-profit entity. Every other entity that you would work with would have some kind of financial vested interest in doing this. We do not. We, those, those administrative costs, those are cost recovery only for work that's done, right? NIPA capitalizes on its generation and transmission of hydroelectric power. My entire group that I represent, Clean Energy Services, is, operates as essentially a third party, not-for-profit. And I think that's very important in building trust. I'm here because I think this is the right thing for you to do, not because I have a commission or because the NIPA, you know, makes money off of it. And I guess just bare bones, black and white, the importance of coming here to talk about something like this in a way that you think you can trust what's on that piece of paper and the things that I'm being, that I'm saying because I think it's the right thing to do. So I think that, thank you for giving me that opportunity to say that. I think it's important. And I'll, I'll leave you to the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.